Welcome, everybody. Sorry about the voice. Welcome, everybody, to the irregular meeting of the City Council. Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, California, Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The five o'clock portion of our council meeting has been recessed till now. We have some executive session items to go over. My call is being ordered and called for roll call.
President Merritt.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Here.
Longacre.
Here. It's about to make a call.
Mr. Evans.
Sure.
Give them excuse absence.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Off the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All the comments pertaining to the executive session item. A three-minute limit on per person has been established. Is there any comments on the executive session? Then we'll move to recess, will recess to executive session. The only we have is conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation regarding significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point ninety-two and or three. One potential case related to a claim received November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two from attorney for Brian Brown related to alleged May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two false arrest claim. Now, we'll recess and execute. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this regular meeting of the City of Needles, California, the public. Needles Public Utility Authority. And we just came back from executive session. We'll have this report out by the city attorney.
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item number A, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant anticipated litigation regarding significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point ninety-two and or three. One potential case related to claim received November fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two from attorney for Brian Brown related to alleged May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two false arrest claim. There was action taken by council in closed session. The action taken by council was to deny the claim. And the motion was made by councilmember Campbell. The second was by councilmember Longacre, and the vote was as follows. Vice Mayor Pageant to deny the claim. Councilmember Belt to deny the claim. Councilmember Longacre to deny the claim. Councilmember Merritt to deny the claim. And Councilmember Campbell to deny the claim.
Thank you. Would you please rise for an invocation and pledge allegiance? Hey, Lord. First of all, thank you for letting us work in the city and help make it a better place to live for our citizens. Be with us tonight as we make these decisions. Help us keep you in the forefront of our thoughts. We love you, Lord, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in honor and saluting our glorious flag.
In the state of the republic where which it stands, with our nation under God, indivisible, which ever change and justice for all.
So approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I move to be approved.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes, Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any conflicts of interest?
Your Honor, I have a number seven on the consent calendar.
Because.
One more in.
One more in. And I'm recusing because I work in cannabis. It's a cannabis-related item. Thank you.
Thanks. Any correspondence?
The whole time.
As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to set your cell phones in their silent mode, please. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects other than those that scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen, amendments to the California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, zero prohibit the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Are there any public appearances?
Judy Thornton, one eight three five South Drive, Mojave Valley. I'm with Needles Tourism and Friends of the El Garcis. I just want you to know, as of tonight, I'll be sitting back there by myself, so.
Oh.
I know that my friend's coming up here. Anyway. Uh. We had a meeting with the Needles, or excuse me, Mojave Valley Tourism Commission a week or so ago. They did a tour of the El Garcis, and they're going to start promoting us within their area, which was a huge thing because they asked if they could come down to us to have this meeting. So that was a big thing. Plus, for anybody that wants to know, we have about eighty-five bricks that are now ready to be set at the El Garcis. Yay! Uh, this has been a year trying to find the ones that we needed to have set and new orders. Anyway, we are going to try after the first of the year to start setting those. We've had a lot of questions from people who had ordered them. They hadn't been set. They didn't know where they were, blah, 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 blah. So anyway, hopefully, we have all of them right now. I know as soon as we set these, we'll have other people that want them too, so we'll start the cycle all over again. But anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Judy Kirkpatrick. I live at four one seven O Needles Highway, known as the Palms. Um, first of all, I want to really thank you for completing the road out there. It's so nice now. Oh, it's just great, really. And behalf of myself and all the other residents that know I come in sometime. Um, we, uh, we have a very dense area north of us, and we had a fire there this year about a half mile up. We're wondering if we can get some more fire breaks in there. Uh, the fire department said that they probably need to do that, you know, for anything coming down our way because it's a pretty big dense area. You don't see it from the highway. You have to go down to the river and look across the area and see it. So if you could look into that with the fire department, we appreciate it. Um, one of the other things I wanted to ask you about was, um, I know we, we pay for a person to work on our image, and there's a five-year plan that Rick told me about. I was concerned when I drive into the city with the different entrances, we have a cannabis store in each one, pretty much. And it would be nice if we had them better landscaped, maybe a better look to them. Because people come in that tourists that I know and residents and that, and they're like, what is this? Just a cannabis city? And I said, no, no, you know, they have different things going on. But the images, when you get off and you drive in, that's what you see. Um, so, uh, the other thing was, um, has the state said anything about the exit, that first exit off the forty going east where they need to cut the pines? I brought that up a while back. Um.
Try.
You know, if they've done anything or gotten back to us about it or not. So a tricky exit. You come off and you circle around. And, um, that's pretty much it, I think. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim.
Tim Carroll, thirteen thirty-five Lily Hill Drive. I just want to thank you all for your service. When I was on council and served with you, we had some great friendships and some great memories. And now that four of you will be coming down here, there's plenty of room on the front, front row to sit with me. But most of all, thank you very much for serving for this great city. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Is there any other public appearance? Thing one, none will move on to the public hearing. Number one is a public hearing. Notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against the annual account of development impact fees for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Hey, Sylvia.
This evening, Sylvia Miletty, Finance Department, this evening, we have our public hearing for the annual account of our development fee balances. Per AB sixteen hundred, it requires both general law and charter cities to account for every development pact. Development impact being a separate fund, which we do, we deposit them into separate funds, not commingled with any other city funds. The city must keep track of each fund and provide this annual report. So as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, the North Needles balance and the categories are noted in your staff report is eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. South Needles, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. For these funds planned for the year, the current fees, um, for the, are a development impact fee study, an update to the pavement management study that was completed a few years back, and a culinary and wastewater study update. These items will be brought to you for approval prior to, uh, signing up for them. So any questions on these balances, the annual report?
Thank you. No questions to staff? All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this item. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for discussion, deliberation, and emotion.
Um, Rick, can I just ask one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
If the, all this money is just kept until we have enough to do something with it, correct?
Right. The state law allows us to accumulate money, uh, but every five, we have to report balances every year. And then every five years, we have to do a study to determine if it's still warrant. And if it's not, then we obligated to refund, but yeah.
Just wait, know the plan with this money.
If you can't do much of a road on twenty-six thousand, it'll, it'll curve.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion that form listed. The mayor, any member of the city council may pull an item. From the consent calendar for discussion prior to consent action or council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matter scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies for making recommended action is approve items two through nine on the consent counter by affirmative roll call vote. Does anybody want to pull anything? You could go on everything else. You're just abstaining from seven, right?
Yeah, I'm abstaining from seven, Your Honor.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Regular items. Resolution number twenty, twenty-two dash eighty, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and declaring results and such other matters as provided by law. Need a voter. It was good, a good election.
Mr. Mayor, you have in your packet the certifications by the registrar of voters of the outcome of the election on November eighth. Uh, these are a question. So, uh, an appropriate action would be to move to adopt, uh, the resolution accepting those results.
I'll read them. Yeah, just kidding.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
I will second it.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt. Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to now administer the oath of office and deliver certificates of election uh, to newly elected Mayor Jen Jernigan and newly elected councilmembers Jamie McCorkle, Joanne Pogan, Henry Longbreak.
Thank you.
I'm just getting off.
We'll just get over.
I'll bring this one over.
Yeah, hi, how you doing?
Well, we'll be giving you this one. They haven't looked at the building yet.
As a follow-up statement.
If you could, it's just a little bit. Okay. Here is your certificate of the election or results. The council is for four years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
As I said, I give you all of them.
I don't believe that this is a balance.
Thank you. There we go.
Thank you.
There's your oath of office. So we got, so are you going to the oath of office? So this is your copy, and I'll have you sign it. And after you pass the test. You're a host.
It's a test?
This is the test. You have to repeat after me, so unless you have that memorized, Henry. So, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, I, Jeremy Rogue.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Now, if I could have you sign your oath of office, I will give you a copy, um, tomorrow. I should have gotten special.
Can I use my own?
Of course. I prefer blue ink.
Oh. I don't know where.
I think it's not blue ink. Thank you, Jesus. And I'll give this, I'll give you a minute. Your back, I just need your copy for my files. Hey, welcome to the city.
Go for the paper, real quick. If afterwards you want to have a picture of just you and Dale with the swearing in, would be glad to, uh, put that together for you.
Okay, we'll have a presentation to the outgoing mayor and council, and then we'll break, and then we'll seat you on the dais. Thank you. So don't go out the front door.
Oh. Yeah. Before you get stepped on, they lock you in here. It is tradition that we provide counselors who have served, uh, duration, a, a plaque which is a tile of the city logo, and so I think we're going to start it with Doc Pageant making presentation.
Mayor Rogue.
My honor to present a plaque to Mayor Jeffrey H. Williams, city council member from April twenty-fifth, two thousand, through December twelfth, two thousand and six, and also from December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, through December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. He's also served as mayor. Those were the city council terms. His mayor terms were from December twelfth, two thousand and six, through December fourteenth, twenty-ten, and from December eleventh, twenty-eighteen, through December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. On behalf of our community, we thank him for his service, for his representation, for his fellowship, his honor in his service to our, to our city and to our fellow city council members, to our city manager, our city attorney, all those involved making Needles the greatest place in the United States to live. My honor to present you this plaque.
It's my honor now to give to Doctor Edward T. Pageant, M.D., a plaque for mayor from December fourteenth, twenty-ten to December eleventh, twenty-eighteen. That was my first term. As mayor was done, I was very proud to hand it over, Doc. He's been a great friend, advocate, and even great mayor, great vice mayor for me and city councilman. City council member from December eleventh, twenty-eighteen, to December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We thank you for your time and service and your many travels on behalf of the City of Needles during your long tenure. Thank you, sir.
While I come to you.
Yeah. Going for this. We have another one leaving us here. Zachary Longacre, city council member from December eleventh, twenty-eight, sorry, twenty-eighteen, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Your commitment to serve for the benefit of the city or the Needles residents is much appreciated, and we thank you. Thanks, bud.
I'm gonna hang on my wall.
There you go. Hey, Brad, go ahead.
Hey, buddy, I'm next. So, good evening, everyone, and first off, uh, thank you to the outgoing council members. It's not always easy, uh, giving up family time to serve the public, but it's well worth it, I think. And congratulations on those that are becoming in. Lot of work ahead of you, so be prepared. But the reason I came over tonight was, um, I should introduce myself, I guess. Um, Brad Porey is Executive Director of Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District. Um, we're located over in Victorville. And, um, it's an honor and pleasure to be here to recognize my friend, my colleague, um, for all of his dedicated service to Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District. And I have a few notes, so I had to write this stuff down because I just couldn't rattle all this stuff off, but, um, so bear with me. So, and Jeff was originally appointed to the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District Board of Directors on January thirteenth of two thousand and fifteen. He was selected as a board vice chair the, on January twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, and subsequently reappointed to the vice chair the following year in January, two thousand and eighteen. And we liked him so much that we decided to appoint him the chair. So in two thousand and nineteen, he was, he was elected as a chair by his fellow, uh, board members and then reconfirmed the following January. Um, so he's done, he's done a lot of great work for, for Mojave Desert and the high, high desert region. During Jeff's eight-year tenure, the board adopted numerous rule amendments, approved millions of dollars in grant funds uh, that has gone across the entire high desert in our jurisdiction, which is twenty thousand square miles, so it's no small feat to try to divvy up money. Um, and he successfully navigated the retirement of the district's executive officer, and then subsequent hire of yours truly to the current executive officer position. In his roles as vice chair and later chair of the board, Mr. Williams participated on the board budget and personnel committees. And so, um, Jeff has always been, I'm sure you guys all know, he's been very dedicated and well-prepared for, for his duties on any board he sits on. Um, he's very courageous. He's took, taken on a lot of tough issues, I know, on my board head-on. And that takes a lot of guts and strength, and he's, uh, he's someone to emulate, so hopefully, uh, your new council members will follow his, his lead on that. He's very caring for, uh, this community, the community of Needles. He's always been your biggest advocate, even if it's not where he's sitting in this room here. It's when he's abroad, if he's, if he's over at our board meeting, or if he's in Sacramento, or wherever he is, he's always advocating for this city. And I'm sure he'll continue to do that, no matter what. Um, and he's just an all-around great guy. Everybody likes being around him, right? Everybody loves the guy. So, um, I'm going to miss you on my board, but, um, through our professional careers, but I've, I've gained a great friend, and we'll have that forever. So I, I value that and appreciate that. And I, I do have a plaque to come up to give you on behalf of the board, too.
Bear with me while I grab this, okay? This is the, this is the base for it. I'll read it. So this says, "In recognition of Jeff Williams for eight years of dedicated service in the gov, at the governing board of Mojave Desert Air Quality Managed, Management District from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-two, appointed by the City of Needles." And I missed. I'm taking it for you. Okay, one with mine, though. Sorry, I'm, you gotta indulge me on this one.
Brad comes to us from Imperial, so he's.
Yeah.
Go head along.
Thank you very much, buddy. It's been a pleasure. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Anybody that steps up and gets on that board, anybody that steps up and gets on that board is working with a great crew over there. He's a great, great leader for our, for that community, that entire air quality management district, so thank you. Great time. Okay.
Uh, we have some tapes and. We have some tapes and...
Okay, we'll start with the roll call. Dale?
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
McCorkle?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Mayor Jurnigan?
Here.
Councilmember Pogue?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Longbreak? Thank you.
Okay, selection of the vice mayor. I'd like to nominate Kirsten Merritt. I think she's well-qualified to assist, you know, in my absence if I can't make a meeting. So I am nominating Kirsten Merritt. And call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Bell?
No.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Regular items. Waide the reading and adopt the resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash seven-eight, authorizing application to participate in and receipt of the pro-housing designation program to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. Staff report?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, and welcome new council members. How we doing tonight? Well, this is great. So I get to be your first presentation, so it's exciting. All right, so HCD has been very kind to the city since we're out of the doghouse. We, for years, weren't compliant, and now we are compliant. And so they're trying to give us a carrot because we've been pretty good in getting our housing element updated and just being good stewards of the state. And so basically, the state has determined that we would be a prime example of a pro-housing designation community, which basically opens us up for future dollars for housing. You know, as you all know, we are in dire need of housing, and this would give us a special designation. It's called the pro-housing designation. And basically, what we have in front of you is accepting a resolution which allows us to enter into an agreement. We don't have to do any changes. We're able to do all these updates to our zoning code through the housing element. So all those things have been taken care of. So it's not like we have to go rezone a bunch of land. These are things that are already included in the laws that we've already adopted as a city. And so we're not asking you to make any changes or anything like that. We're just adopting, utilizing what we have available to move forward. So our recommendation is approval of resolution two thousand twenty-two dash seventy-eight so that we can make ourselves eligible for housing opportunities here within the city. If you have any questions, I'm now available. That concludes my presentation.
My question is, this is in reference to what he came and spoke to us a few weeks ago, correct, the housing?
Councilmember Merritt, so that's next. That's coming later, or that was part of... Yeah, that was part of your consent. That was part of your consent. But basically, they're coupled. They're gonna work together. We're gonna give them a one-two punch to be able to try to get new housing opportunities here in the city.
Do we have any more council discussion for this? Should I ask for a public comment? And do we have anything from the public, a three-minute limit? Comment on this? Next, I'm gonna ask for approval or... Okay, we're going to approve the...
Somebody make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Provide staff direction with regard to funding an additional sheriff's deputy at mid-year budget in the amount of two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-five using general fund reserves.
Mayor members of the council, I have provided a updated staff report with some highlighted numbers. The city has been, over the last few years, expanding the law enforcement platform in the city. In two thousand twenty-two, the city council added money for additional overtime of seventy-seven thousand dollars. Later in the year, the city added funding of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred for an additional sheriff's deputy. The current budget is three point three six nine million for the sheriffs. The sheriff's office is now requesting an additional two hundred thirty-nine thousand beginning in January twenty twenty-three to add an additional deputy plus equipment and supplies. The city is pursuing a three-year grant from the California Cannabis Bureau for it's eligible only to communities which host cannabis facilities and is to help offset any additional law enforcement costs. Sylvia and the lady who was here earlier is heading up an effort on that grant. We met with the sheriff's office, and they've identified that they would... They're requesting a deputy. There's a three-year grant without a million and a half dollars. Is what we're looking for. So that would be a deputy plus a K-9 unit. We've worked with the school district, and they've directed us towards the Center for Change. They want to add a school counselor that would head up the cannabis or marijuana and alcohol intervention and prevention education program. Because right now, they don't have a school counselor. And they identified that as their primary need. And then we've identified that we can recover some of our cost of code enforcement of those that inspect cannabis facilities that would be able to recover those costs. So we will be submitting an application to the California Cannabis Bureau. We don't have a determination on that grant yet. What I've done is I've outlined three choices for the council. One, you could direct the city manager to include two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars in the mid-year budget and authorize the mayor to sign the contract tonight, which is called a catchment aid in the pack. A second alternative would be to hold this request until the Cannabis Bureau grant outcome is known. The third would be to hold the request until the mid-year budget, so that way you will know what other demands are going to be for resources and how this might fit within the context for next year. I feel obligated to report to you that the economic future is unknown, as it always is. But in this case, nearly every economist that I'm aware of, that I can read or hear, is forecasting a recession in two thousand twenty-three of an unknown severity. Nobody's saying that it'll be as severe as two thousand eight when we had the mortgage prices melt down. Everybody's concluded that there will be something in two thousand three because of stagflation, which is a stagnant economy coupled with inflation from dumping too much money in the economy. As well, it's important to understand that our revenues are lagging so far this year by about three percent. So at twenty-five percent of the year, we only have about twenty-two percent of the revenue realized. So and what we've found is that one of the causes of that is the cannabis prices that our cultivators sell for have dropped from seventeen hundred a pound to seven hundred a pound. So therefore, we haven't seen anybody cutting back in the amount that's being grown, but we're seeing that they're selling at a much lower price, which affects the ten percent tax. So we don't know how long that will last. We are tracking it because from management side, as we see these trends, we start constricting spending to make sure that we don't get out over the ends of our skis. So with that rosy picture, the sheriffs are asking to add a deputy. They've asked for it tonight because they want to take because they want to take their request to the County Board of Supervisors at their upcoming meeting yet this year, and would look to have that deputy in place by the first of the year. So with that, I'd be glad to answer.
It's one in three weeks. I, I have a question. Um, in the report, it says that they're asking 100, 197,000. So that would equate to double that over the course of a year, 400?
It would be beginning January 1, so during the course of entire calendar year 2023. They would add, the deputy person would cost 197,000.
That would, that would cover the whole year, not from January to June?
That's right. So cut it in half. That's what the.
Okay.
Then, uh, we're obligated to provide a car, everything on his belt, uh, uniform, all those other supplies.
Okay.
Plus, uh, uh, maintenance and other.
Right.
Yeah, and the cars are already in place. This is a mid-year add, so it wouldn't.
But it's an annualized number. I was under the impression it was six months and.
This is an annual number. Then if you look in the schedule A, the way our Bureau of Administration prepared this, they gave a credit for the first part of the year.
Right.
Um, and the reason for this is our desire to have two deputies on duty at all times. And this comes from, you know, throughout California, the increase in violent crimes, the increase in assaults on deputies. We've seen that here. So it's, it's really for public safety, the safety of the citizens, safety for the deputies. You know, a lot of the calls we go to have a propensity for violence, domestic issues. And so with two deputies, that provides that added measure of safety for everyone involved. You know, we don't send one person to a power outage and a power pull-down. You send several people for safety. You don't send one person to a water leak because you need more people to handle that. It's similar situation. It's come to the point now where for the safety of everyone, we need to have two deputies on duty at all times.
Yeah, I was just asking clarification on the, the dollar. So it makes more sense when it's annualized.
There was overtime money allocated, and that was to fill some of the, the gaps in the schedule. That would not be needed if we added this deputy.
We added that.
Because the full-time position would eliminate the need for the overtime. And you know, the, the benefit of, for the city is a guaranteed level of service. So we guarantee that we will provide these hours 24/7, 365. So in effect, no one ever calls in sick, no one ever goes on vacation. There's always someone there. City doesn't have to provide training, retention, retirement, any of that. Because if the person assigned to the city is off that day, we provide someone else to fill that spot at no additional cost because of the guaranteed level.
Rick, isn't, um, didn't we do half a, half an officer already?
We, we did last year. We added one.
Half of an officer, correct? Not a full-time two. We have 1.5?
It was, it was one officer or half a shift, if I recall right.
Yeah, we added another deputy, which added another person to the shifts to, um, give us two on most of the time.
Yes.
This fills that gap.
So does this pricing, so what's the price that we paid for the, adding that half of one with the, with the overtime amount? Now the difference that we'll have, how much is that total?
Well, total, that was about 260.
Complete with the whole package? But then how much were we already paying? So it really, what's the, what, how much is the actual increase gonna be for us?
Well, this would be 239 on an annual basis, in addition to what we've done.
In addition to what we've already paid?
Yes, in addition to the 3.369.
No.
Pay this year.
No, not the addition million. You know, how much did we pay for the half officer? Because really, we're only adding in a half officer, right?
Well, we're adding a, a full-time officer.
Correct.
But starting mid-year. So, yeah, that, that's why there's a credit. There's a credit for July 1 to January 15 on the schedule A.
We've already been paying for one and a half and overtime. Why wasn't the officer like 12-hour shift or in there?
Yeah, we added a deputy jet last January. And so that added an additional person to our schedule.
Correct.
So we're able to staff someone, two people on for most of the shifts.
Correct. So we should only be paying half more, right? Does that make sense?
No.
If we're already paying for half of an officer.
Well, we.
So the second half should be, correct?
Well, Ja- July 1 started a new fiscal year, so now.
Correct. But we're still paying for him. Half of that officer, correct?
You're paying for the full officer.
So one full officer already? So 1.5 officers or how many are we paying for?
Well, you pay for essentially nine right now. Well, eight right now.
And you're asking to add a ninth one?
Correct.
So a full, completely, so you're saying right now on shift, there's, in a 24-hour period, there's two officers on? One A, B shift, say?
Mo- yes, most of the time, there's still a gap in hours for the coverage where there's only one. And so.
Really, we're not asking for a full officer then, is what I'm saying, because we're already paying for a half. No. I mean, right? I'm just trying to get the numbers right. If we're already paying half of that money.
Well, it funded a full-time deputy. We, we don't add half a person because.
Correct, but half a, if it was a shift, was it two shifts that we're saying? So now we need one for A, one for B?
We, we added essentially.
So you had three, a three shifts, now we're adding a fourth shift in. So it'll be a whole nother person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, this, we, uh, we do want to add an SRO, and that cannabis grant can fund that school resource officer. This is for patrol functions, daily patrol functions. Since there is no SRO, we do have to respond to the schools. That's why ideally having a full-time deputy there would relieve us of that necessity. So this is to provide coverage every day, all the time.
I have a concern about the security and, and the, and the safety of our, uh, of our public. That's what I have. What is it by not approving this? What, what would be affecting our safety?
Um, the, um.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, um, Councilor Longbreak, uh, it would be the s- the status quo, the staffing that we have today would continue until your next opportunity to review the budget in January. And then after that would be the next opportunity to review that funding level would be in June.
Okay, well, I'm talking about the safety. Uh, I had a situation myself personally where I was attacked in the park, and it took 15 minutes for an officer to arrive. And that's why I was wondering i- if that would be a quicker response time, if we had another.
Certainly adding more people increases our response time, our ability to respond. You know, if there's one person on duty and he's busy on another call or, you know, he's taking someone to jail, then it does limit our ability to respond or delays the response. It can.
My, my main concern is the safety. There's the safety of our, of our public, you know, which includes me.
Right. Madam Mayor, law enforcement and the safety of our citizens is always the number one top of everybody's list. And the, the only thing that you're being asked to do tonight is figure out do, based on adding an officer last year, do you want to add a second one now? As opposed to later in the year as things develop?
Madam Mayor, have a question. Rick, um, if we don't approve this, if we go with holding the request, and then cannabis thing, we're gonna have to wait for, holding the request until the mid-year budget, we go with the third thing here. Oh, now let me rephrase that. If we do approve it, and a recession happens, what happens to our budget at that point?
Well, if.
If it's bad.
Uh, if, if it is significant, uh, we will have to make cuts to our operations across, I mean, not evenly across the board, but you may have to eliminate other programs that are currently being provided at, uh, the rec center, the Jack Smith Park. It won't affect capital improvements because those projects are independently funded. But it would, um, cut your general fund availability for other operations of the city. Whether it's public works or, because, I mean, you, you cut the revenue, you gotta cut the expenses. I mean, if revenue drops. And we're already getting an inkling.
Okay. Um, so when would we know what the outcome of the grant is? If it's not 100% free, apply for the grant that we're gonna get it, right?
You're right. It, it.
So when would the cutoff be that we would know if we even got the grant?
Okay. Madam Mayor, uh, uh, Councilor McCorkle, the, um, the grant is due within a week, 10 days, and it's very, very soon. And it is essentially done. So in all likelihood, we wouldn't know until March whether that grant would be awarded. And then we also don't know when that money would be available. Because oftentimes, we will get a grant, but they will say, but it's not available till July. So really, you're looking at the second half of the remainder of the fiscal year to June.
Okay, and then I have one more question. Um, not knowing, I mean, knowing the scope of a police officer in some sense, um, but here at Needles, what does your office do to, do you guys, um, do investigations, like drug investigations? Other things like that, other than just being called to domestic violence?
We do.
Also the part.
We do every law enforcement investigation you can imagine, from homicides to drugs to sexual assaults to domestic violence, to traffic accidents, to anything law enforcement related falls to us. We handle that here at our station. We also have resources we can draw on from throughout the county. Our specialized division, our homicide teams, our crimes against children's teams, our narcotics teams, our SWAT teams, our aviation unit. All that is just a radio call away for, uh, bring additional personnel out here to handle any situation that, that we encounter.
Six months, what's about your average call per shift?
Well, um, we, we average a, a call and a half per hour on average. So, you know, you can imagine if there's one person, calls can stack up. And depending on the nature of the call, it could take 10 minutes to handle. It could take six hours. We run into a lot of situations now, um, with the requirements to book people into jail. We have to drive them to, uh, the West Valley Detention Center in Rancho Cucamonga. Person's gone an entire shift or more because of the medical requirements that we now have to provide. We don't like to let people out of jail if they need to stay in jail. So we make every effort possible to keep people in jail. In addition, um, you know, with the volume of people that have mental health issues, if we do take someone for that, we have to drive them to Arrowhead Regional Medical Center in Colton, to the Behavioral Health Unit to put a hold on them there. So some of these things, and we do that almost daily, one of those runs. So these things can really tie up deputies, and then that deputy's gone for an entire shift.
Sure.
Um, this is really hard. I, you know, I want you to know that I, I follow your page. I watch the police reports. I follow your page. I see everything that you're doing, and you guys are enormously busy and just superbly covering our town. You, you do a great job. We are really grateful to have you. We're lucky to have all of you. Um, my concern is, is that, um, I'm looking at the, um, the request. Councilwoman McCorkle already had us know that, that we're not gonna know about the cannabis grant until March. But the mid-year budget comes out in January, so we would know in January. We wouldn't have to wait for that. So we have two things coming, but we have the mid-year budget knowing in January. It would give us a better idea of where we are financially, where we are, and maybe a little bit closer to knowing what's happening with the recession, even though it's only a month away. A lot can happen after Christmas, um, in the new year. So that's, those are, that's where my heart and my thoughts are coming from in, in trying to, to juggle. I mean, safety is important. All of our safety is important. Your safety is important, but we are also charged with how we spend the money.
Well, and the cannabis grant is, we've already planned to use that for a school resource officer. That's a different deputy for a different purpose, doing a specialized job at the schools. This is for a patrol deputy. Different.
I just have one quick question. I mean, assuming if we, if we voted to approve this today, how long would it take to recruit somebody and to get somebody in checking references and doing all the hiring? It, it could be that by the time you've gone through all that, it's January.
City doesn't have to worry about hiring, retaining, recruiting, any of it. We do all that. You know, we have 2,000 sworn in our agency. Um, we have deputies here we can draw on. So there's a large pool that we can draw on. So it would happen the day this was.
I have another question for you. Uh, it says K-9 unit. Does that mean we, we're gonna get a K-9 unit with this money?
Well, that was the discussion for the school resource officer. That's not.
Oh, that's different. Okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
Yeah, that entails.
Gotcha.
Could that K-9 officer still be used at your, at your department for any investigations that you do do?
They, they would be working out of our station. Yes.
Does that with school?
Well, their primary assignment would be as a school resource officer. Obviously, they can assist in other, other areas in the city.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Captain Trangle. Is there any other public comment? Okay, Barbara.
We didn't have any yet, right?
No.
I'm losing it.
Barbara Beard 213 Safari, um, it came to my attention about a month ago that we also cover down to, and the cap can, can, can correct me, down to Big River and out to Kel Baker. But that is county. When it cuts off county, then that budget kicks, kicks in. But I, I don't know if it's our, still our same officers where we're trying to have one or two on duty. I don't know how that all works out, and I'm thinking, I'm glad I'm not doing the math on that. So, um, we're talking about a really big area, not just downtown or this needles proper that they have to cover.
Identity here.
Right. So I'm always for more law enforcement, no matter what it costs, because the, the, the bad acts are getting closer to us all the time. And that one Orange County murder, three triple murder, they got the guy on Kel Baker. Okay, thank goodness our officers, deputies didn't have to go out there, but that's close. And we have more of that coming out here all the time. So anyway, I don't know how it works out county-wise, but that's a long, that's a big distance.
Yeah.
I, I would like. Thank you.
The deputies that are paid for in the city contract work and stay in the city.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, if there's a huge life-threatening emergency, mutual aid kinda kicks in. We have other deputies assigned to our county patrol operation. They're the ones that would respond to.
Did I get the first part? I didn't hear the first part. The deputies that are assigned to Needles?
Stay in, stay in Needles.
So I have a question. So the resource officer, irregardless, is gonna be from the cannabis, and then we're still gonna hire an officer, right? So then we end up with one and a half officers?
Two and a half.
Two.
Two and a half.
Oh, okay.
One dedicated to school funded through cannabis.
Okay. All right.
We have one and a half right now.
Yeah.
For clarity, when, when we last had a, or Madam Mayor, when we last had a school resources officer, I believe the school paid 40%, city paid 40%, and the sheriff paid 20% because there's three months where there's no school. And that person would then be dropped into the pool of officers for whatever they assign.
Okay.
What's that about this time?
We don't know. We don't know. We haven't gotten that far.
All right, thank you, Captain Trangle. Okay, um, is there a motion for?
I have another comment, though. This still comes out, this isn't in our budget, so it still comes out of our general fund. And right now, we have probably, how much in our ex, excess? 700?
Yes.
Probably about 700,000. So this is 300, close to 300,000 coming out. And that's just our reserve that we have for any disaster, anything we have. So, I mean, do, being on the budget committee, this is something, this is a huge amount more money. I mean, they already get 3 million, not that. I don't, I completely. I mean, they already get three million, not that, I don't, I completely believe in police, one hundred percent. But it's just something that is a lot of money unbudgeted right now that we have not put in, not even in mid-year. At least look at all of our numbers before we say, let's just, I mean, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the city, make sure that, I mean, I don't wanna have to come in next week. Exactly, with one disaster that happens, the water break lost us four hundred thousand right off the bat.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, insurance did come in, thank goodness, but we still have to front that money. We still have to front that money. So.
Sorry.
Okay, so um, is there a motion regarding?
More questions.
Sure.
If we can't, if we, if we run out of money, does the county pick that money up? That comes from us and it goes in the negative.
Well, we we will not.
Okay, we would have to cut budgets on other areas.
Right.
It is illegal.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, follow one.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to wait till we decide, so it's gonna be, hold until the request of the Cannabis Bureau and/or mid-budget comes in.
Okay.
Are they two separate choices? Well, the cannabis is only, well, actually, Rick, is the cannabis only gonna cover the officer? Then it won't have any extra money at all for this officer?
Madam Mayor. We don't know how that allocation of that officer is gonna.
At all, so, okay, so.
Right now, we're targeting it to go towards youth, drug, alcohol.
Okay, so then I'll just put, hold until the, till the mid-year budget is known.
That was my second.
Yeah.
And do I call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yeah.
Ogg?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
No.
Um, city attorneys report.
Yes, just briefly. Normally, at the beginning of a council meeting, um, we have on the agenda to review the council procedures, and we didn't do it this evening at the beginning of the meeting. So I thought, um, I, I'm not gonna read them all because they're lengthy, but I, I, you know, it'll be helpful to the council and new council members as we begin the meetings to go over the rules of procedure. Um, and I'll just touch on some of them. The, uh, first, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. Um, a council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. Um, no member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. And then members of the public attending the council meeting shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that and, and then when we normally, when we go through the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, I'll, I'll read, I'll read over those rules of procedure. And those are just the basic rules um, that just govern and have governed for years since, I think, nineteen ninety-eight, the, the meetings. The other thing, I wanted to um, just report on some of our activities on behalf of the city uh, recently, and those include representing the city in connection with the uh, the Brian Brown matter that was on tonight's closed session. Uh, there was a claim submitted to the city um, by Mr. Brown through his attorney, and the closed session vote out was to deny that claim and will be continuing to represent the city in connection with that. There's also a ongoing lawsuit by the name, filed by Rio Buena Vista. And so at a future council meeting, we'll update the new council members on what the history of that is, what it's about, and uh, and fully brief you on that, as well as the status of the case. And so we've been continuing to represent the city and the NPUA in connection with that litigation. Also, we have been assisting the city in connection with public contracting matters, um, including working on a design-build contract uh, for the waste, for the water treatment facility. And then also assisted on review of live scans. Um, when individuals apply to work in the cannabis industry and needles, they have to go through a background check. And there are certain types of convictions, if they have those, they're not like serious felonies. Uh, they're, they're not allowed to work in that industry. And so we assist staff uh, going through those live scans. Uh, sometimes it's difficult when you look at the reports to figure out, well, exactly what type of conviction is that, is serious felony or not? Is it one that disqualifies them? And so we assist staff with that. And then um, tonight during the consent calendar, council voted on an amendment to the cannabis ordinance. Um, and we uh, drafted that um, that amendment and uh, um, continue to work with staff as needed uh, when amendments are, are required to keep up with changes in the law and changes in conditions here in needles. And then also, we work on real estate matters for the city uh, as needed. Um, we uh, have been providing updates to recent changes in the law. We're getting ready to start a new, a new year. Um, the legislative session ended in September, and so there are typically this time of year, changes in the law. And I'm gonna go over one of those new laws in a moment here. Um, and then we provide advice regarding the Brown Act and conflict of interest questions. And the new council members, you may from time to time have questions about whether you have a conflict of interest on something, whether you can participate, uh, whether you need to recuse yourself, and you have my phone number, you can contact me and I'll, and I'll advise you. It's, the law regarding conflicts is not intuitive. It, it, you know, it's regulatory and sometimes it doesn't even make sense. Um, but um, it's, it's something that we can help you navigate through. Also, uh, we uh, continue to represent the city in connection with the River Valley Inn. Um, code enforcement-related issues, and then assisting the city on sequoia matters as needed, uh, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. And then um, also assisting the city in connection with implementing the um, recently adopted amendment to its transient occupancy tax ordinance um, that was on the ballot. It was approved by the voters. And, and, and now the T O T tax, which normally is a tax that applies to hotel stays, uh, also applies to short-term rentals, and so we're working with the city on that. And then um, we assist the city in connection with enforcing its cannabis ordinance, as well as the cannabis tax that was passed by the voters. And then we have um, the council, as previously constituted, prioritize cleaning up needles and wanted to enforce its code and make sure that people were complying with its code. And so as part of that effort to clean up and beautify needles, uh, we've, um, we're currently representing the city in over twenty code enforcement actions where sometimes the property, you can't even find the property owner, you know, there's just a property that's not in code compliant condition. And so, you know, as a city, we can't just go onto somebody's property and make corrections or changes to bring it into compliance with the code. And so we have to go into court and we have to get what's called an abatement order. We have to get permission from the court to go onto their property and address the code violations if the owner of the property is not responding. Um, and that frequently is the case. And so uh, we have over twenty of those um, that we're handling. In addition to the code enforcement cases, we also handle what are receivership cases. So that might be a property that's in bad condition, but if it was revitalized, it could be put back into the housing stock and become housing again for the city. And it typically, those receivership cases require more than just, you know, uh, going in and cleaning up one issue or addressing one issue. It's a, it's a, a major rehab of the property. And so under California Health and Safety Code provisions, we can go into court and the court will, the court will appoint a receiver to take possession of the property. And again, often these are properties that there's really nobody um, that's, you know, uh, accountable for the condition of the property. Um, and so the court will appoint a receiver, the receiver will then go in and rehab the property and then have it sold so that it can be, you know, put back to use in the community. Um, and I think that's it. And then the other thing that I wanted to address with you is there's some changes to the Brown Act that um, deal with attending meetings remotely, and some of you may have tuned in during COVID when uh, the meetings were being conducted remotely. And um, during COVID, there were special rules that allowed all the legislative bodies in California to attend remotely rather than in person because, you know, there was a lot of uncertainties with that, that um, virus. Um, then uh, a new law came along called AB three sixty-one, and AB three sixty-one allowed the council members to attend remotely, all of them, if they wanted to, or whichever ones wanted to, as long as there was a statewide emergency order in place. And we're currently under AB three sixty-one, which expires on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. So that's coming to an end. So that's gonna affect the way, you know, in the, under that rule, if a council member decided, look, I'm not feeling good or my kid's not feeling good or my, my spouse, they could choose to attend remotely. Um, and after February twenty-eighth, the rules are gonna be different than they were before. Um, and the new law, um, which amends the Brown Act, uh, is AB two four four nine. And it goes into effect on January one, twenty twenty-three. Um, there will still be a provision in the Brown Act that allows you to attend remotely. So if you, it's not due to a health issue or an emergency, but you just can't make it for whatever reason. Let's say you're on vacation and you're out of town, but you wanna go to the council meeting. You can still attend without using the rules in this law, under the old provisions of the Brown Act. And the way you do that is you call Dale ahead of time, before the agenda's posted. And what she'll do is she'll have to put the address that you're attending from. So let's say that you're in Nevada and you're on vacation and you're staying at a hotel, then you would put the address of that hotel, and that would be listed on the agenda. Um, but it would also, the agenda would have to be posted, believe it or not, on your hotel room door. And the public would be entitled to attend from your hotel room or your home or whatever remote location. I know it sounds kinda crazy, but that's the, that's been the rule for many, many, many years, um, until COVID happened. We did have a situation once where a council member uh, chose to attend remotely from their home, and people did show up at their home wanting to attend from their, from their living room. And um, so uh, that's rare, though. That's pretty rare. So um, so there is that option. If you've got a vacation or you just, you can't make it, you're not feeling good, you just got too much going on, you wanna attend remotely, um, you just let Dale know in advance so she can put it on the agenda, you're attending remotely, okay? Um, so being on vacation, even if you're on a cruise ship, you can attend uh, or in the mountains somewhere, you can attend, you just have to give the address and then she'll post it, and you have to post it on your door. But there's also this new rule under AB two four four nine that allows you to attend without posting the address that you're attending from on the agenda and without having to allow the public to attend from your location. And that's under two circumstances. One, if you have what's called, they call, the legislature calls just cause, okay? And just cause is that you have the following. Child care or caregiving of a child, a parent, grandparent, grandchild, sibling, spouse, or domestic partner that requires you to participate remotely. Or you have a contagious illness that prevents you from attending the meeting. Uh, or you have a need related to a disability, not otherwise accommodated. Or you're traveling while on official business of the city or another state or local agency. In that case, you could um, say, I've got just cause. I, I just found out today that, you know, somebody in my family is sick that I've gotta take care of, or I'm not feeling well. And you could just call Dale and let her know you're gonna attend remotely, and you can do that without posting it on the agenda, et cetera. But you can only do that twice in a year. You're limited to two times a year, okay? The other option, in addition to just cause, is where you have an emergency circumstances. And that's described as a physical or family medical emergency that prevents you from attending in person. So um, the member must request, so you have to request that the council allow you to participate remotely due to the emergency. As, and you gotta do that as soon as, as possible under the circumstances. And then the council has to take action on that request. So, okay, I've got an emergency, somebody in my family, you know, has an emergency, I've gotta be at the hospital or whatever, but I wanna attend remotely. Um, or I've got some kind of medical emergency, I wanna attend remotely, I contact Dale as soon as possible. And then the first thing the council will do in, in the meeting is act on that request to attend based on an emergency. And that's not subject to the two-time limit. But that would be an emerg, a true emergency-type situation. Um, if you uh, if you do attend um, under these exceptions, um, then you have to uh, you have to disclose if there's someone over the age of eighteen that is in the room with you and their general relationship to you. So um, not sure what that rule's about, but um, one possible rationale for that rule would be sometimes you're gonna be in closed session. And uh, you know, if it was another, you know, a spouse or somebody, they should not be in that, in that room during that closed session meeting. So that would probably be the reason why. So anyway, um, and I think that's uh, I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
City manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, we are uh, prepared to issue the certificate of occupancy for the visitor center. Um, as soon as we get the report from the fire inspection today. So we are probably within a couple of days of that. Uh, I've been working with um, Councilor Longacre um, on council approved at your last meeting, upgrading the skate park. Uh, we're working with a muralist to brighten that gray up. And we also believe that if a mural is established in the bowl of the two bowls, that they graffiti artists tend to shy away from destroying murals. So um, we are, we're working with that. Uh, we have a piece of property that, as you just come across the bridge from Arizona, excuse me, to the left, uh, we found that in twenty eighteen, the Department of Toxics and Substance Control at State declared that a superfund site because of the existence of a gold smelter that was there from eighteen ninety to nineteen one. And that's put a big cloud over the River Lux condominium project. So we are trying to work with uh, uh, city attorney's office and those agencies to find out what the applicant has to do. They also put a chill on the sale of the Needles Marina because the agency speculated that there might have been emissions, air emissions that got on the other property or that slag from the smel, yeah, I said speculate. Because there's only been a drive-by at the property. Nobody's done any sample, but no. We do know that our wells downstream show no evidence of contamination. So that's, I had a chance to meet with the new executive officer at Calaverty Community College. This woman is a go-get. Uh, she is aggressive in workforce development. I think you'll see, um, uh, for example, she's working very hard on getting a, a curriculum for lobotomists. So other than Tana, who knows what it is, draw blood. Um, but she's looking at a lineman, uh, that's not the right term, line technician um, uh, program. Uh, she's looking at uh, programs to help us get our water and wastewater treatment plant operators certified. Uh, so I wouldn't have to send them to Vegas for a week. So I think you're gonna see good things coming out of this campus. The Hampton Inn has been issued its certificate of occupancy, which means the final inspection's been, been done. And all but a couple of things like some baseboards and cosmetic things. Uh, so they are in training, built this conducting training, they expect to open January second.
Oh.
As well, we have received an application to expand that hotel that isn't open yet by eighteen rooms. So we, that eighteen-room motel. So we, that eighteen-room motel will go to a hundred-room motel in a very short period of time. Oh, I'd had the opportunity for Councilor McCorkle and Councilor Poe and, and Mayor Jernigan to do a briefing, and I've got one scheduled for tomorrow with Councilor Longbreak about the basics of the charter, of the council rules and procedures, summary of the budget, where does money come from, where does it go? So it's, it's intended to be a primer on the basics to, to increase your comfort level in performing your duties. We're, we're finishing up on the striping of the street repair or street reconstructions. We're down, down on A, B, C, D. And then there were some cross streets. So that's, that's looking very good. I've been working with the Needles Housing Authority to try and energize them to seek hundreds of millions of dollars and at the federal level, billions of dollars that are available for low and moderate income houses. Now, moderate income housing goes up to seventy to eighty thousand dollars. So we're not talking about, we are, we have more than enough low, low income. It is that workforce housing that we're trying to get the Needles Housing Authority, of which you appoint their board members. So that's our relationship to them. We need to get them energized. Tri-State had their ten-year anniversary over the weekend. And they are working on converting the old Napa building to a, move their whole clinic down there plus add a dental, dental office, dental practice. So that should help downtown. The mayor and I are meeting with the presiding judge from Superior Court System on the twentieth. And they are going to outline their schedule for reinstituting the court and how soon they'll be able to just deal with infractions, the misdemeanors to, you know, full service. But I think that's probably a couple of years in all honesty. So, but we're going to meet with them and they're going to outline their plans. We are between two-thirds and three-quarters of the way through in installing the new electric meters, the automatic meters. And we are on the cusp of issuing the R F P for installation of the water meters. So that program is well underway. Over here at Duke Watkins, you may be able to see that we're putting, or actually Robinson Electric is putting up the new field lights or use of that. So we are in construction season and there are signs going up everywhere. With that implied, answer any questions or, you know, where to go.
Madam Mayor, can I just add to what the city manager said? He's been providing training to the council members. Just something, if you haven't already done so and filed the Form seven hundred, which is a statement of economic interest, see Dale to make sure you do that. It's required by law. And then also you're, it's mandated that you take A B twelve thirty-four training. And if you haven't done that, Dale can direct you to the F P P C website for that training. And the training on the website for the F P P C is, is their training and they're the regulatory body that enforces the law. So it's the best training available. And I, I usually take it two or three times a year. I highly recommend it. So.
And, and the councilors attending the, the new counselor and mayor workshop in February, they'll have a session on that too. If you don't, don't do it online, you can get certified through that process.
Oh, okay. Good, good.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. First, I want to welcome all of you to City Council. It's going to be an exciting time for all of us. And I also wanted to, you know, skirt tail on the Tri-State. I went to the Tri-State, Patrick did too. We were downtown for the tenth anniversary celebration. We got the tour of the building. It's pretty exciting to see that, you know, these things are coming and these services are coming. We had, you know, they provided pizza and drinks for us. We had a live band down there all day long. It was really, really nice. And on that note, one of the things that we approved today, because we did it in a sweep, is, is doing the GoGov project where we're going to have a mechanism instead of going with Facebook, which I was ready to launch. We're going to have a place where people can go and look and see what's coming up, what activities are having. And, and I want to thank the tourism group because they've worked really hard on it. I steal your stuff all the time. And, you know, Sean has stuff, the tourism has stuff. I put stuff on my city council page and we share it with each other. And we try our best to get it out to the public so that we have public participation. One of the things that happened at this event for Tri-State was they gave away food baskets. They had so many of them and very few people came to the event. And so they, they take it all with it. And then one of the things with our food giveaway programs, we have the most amazing giveaway programs in this town of food baskets from different agencies. And some of them, if we don't use them, we lose them. And they're not discriminatory. Anyone can come and get them. I come and pick them up for other people and deliver them. So it's a, it's a project that, you know, we want to pass around. So this GoGov is going to be really cool. We're going to do that. And I want, I, I don't know if any of you saw, I know some of you saw it, but Kathy Condon, a writer, wrote the most beautiful article about our town. And she's going to be writing another one. So that was pretty cool that, you know, that she did that. So, you know, getting us out there, which is really, really nice. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember McCorkle.
I, so I do have a request. I, I would like to, the housing authority. Housing is a huge issue. That's one of our main sources to get the city moving into the right direction. And are we able for the next meeting to get a more detailed list on what has been happening with the meetings, the movement on grants that has been offered?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Merritt.
Um, I just have a few little things. One, thank you to our Doc Paget and to Zach Longacre and to Mayor Williams and Wade Evans, who wasn't here tonight. You guys were awesome. Great to work with you and we look forward to working with the new group. I also want to say thank you to Alan and Tana, who helped put on a fabulous employee party. It was awesome. So many people have commented on how great it was. And also we had a really good event, the Downtown Holiday Fun Fair. It was a great event. So a lot of fun things have happened and are happening. So, so, thank you.
Councilmember Puck. I'm just, want to say I'm happy to be here and looking forward to the next four years. But I do have a question. What, what happened to the bridge work? Has that been delayed?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I might. The Arizona Department of Transportation's lead agency, they are having to lift the deck of the bridge. And they are putting in joints in the bridge that in the event of an earthquake, it gives a little bit. Well, those require all bearings. And they got, they ordered the bearings, they arrived. Arizona Department of Transportation put up the signs that starting next week. And then the bearings didn't pass the compression test. So fortunately they tested.
Yeah. Yeah.
So they have now reordered the bearings. They're expecting
The signs down.
The project to start within the next ten days.
Okay, yeah, because they were, signs were up and then they were gone.
Councilmember Belt, a couple of things. Do we know anything on the acoustics on the gym yet? When that, anything detailed on that acoustic? The acoustics on the gym.
On the gym.
Basketball season and it's quite loud.
Consultant that has given us what needs to be done. And it's just Jennifer now issuing the procurement for whatever treatment we're going to put on it, whether it's ceiling tiles or whether it is fabric on the side walls like we did it.
Of course.
But I'll, I'll give you a more detailed written.
And again, thank you to everybody at Christmas in the Park and the Lighted Parade. I know a lot of people put a lot of work in and volunteering for these events. And they're very nice to have these and keep these going. So very much appreciate those. The visitor center was up, was, you're going to, they're going to issue them an occupancy award and then are we going to have a grand opening or something of that sort with them?
Yes, but they could, they could begin to move in probably within today.
Okay.
They're, they, oh, fire marshal signed off, uh, fire sprinklers. So they could move in. And so as soon as they get nested, nested, then, then.
We'll call a meeting with that group.
Yeah, set that up.
And then building across the street from the credit union, any word on their progress? That empty lot, they're supposed to be giving us markers to meet on what their progress is going to be downtown.
Oh, the downtown parcel.
Parcel.
We have given the purchaser kind of some very tight deadlines. And then if not, we're able to buy that.
Do we know where we are on them? Because it's been a few years.
It's, it's.
Four years at least.
We'll provide you with copies of our notice to.
Because that's been, yeah, I mean, the price has definitely increased drastically. And also the Christmas party, I would, lots of work on, thank Ellen for all our help with that for the employees. I mean, I really enjoy doing it. But I would like to also get employee appreciation committee because it is overwhelming amount of work and I, we can't just do it the two of us. It's just too much work. So we need a committee that's going to help us out on this because it's a lot of work. Also, the permit fees for the marijuana, I was talking to some, we only have a couple of smalls in town, I guess. So I guess our permit fee is ten thousand square feet or less and then ten thousand square feet or greater than. There's only two separate ones. So we have two in town that are less than five hundred square feet. So they still pay the same amount as a ten thousand square feet. So I guess the state has a different fee system. I would like to bring that issue up so we can look into those pricing because that's been brought up a couple of times to me and it's my fault for not bringing it up sooner, especially with the, with the new, the, at the adjustments we just made on the, on the marijuana ordinance. So we can try to look into that one for them. And also California versus Arizona, I know Patrick, you're working on a differential between the two, like, why are we not, why are people not growing and building in California? So I'd like to have that so we can get that where so everybody can see, actually see the physical numbers to differentiate between why, what it is costing to build a house. Same square feet house, you know, whatever it be thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred square feet house here in California versus across the river on Arizona. So that everybody understands the difference in the fees. Is it just Arizona or is, I mean, California laws, what, what actually makes a difference between the two? And, um, oh, maybe a little on the off, on those off-ramps, just a little word. There was somebody out measuring from the states, somebody maybe may have not told me this. So they are definitely moving forward with our off-ramps. So they were out just this week measuring for redo, redoing the off-ramps. So they're still working on it. But they're actually measuring this week. So.
Is there any talk about putting stoplights at the end of them? Somebody had mentioned to me a couple of months ago that that wasn't on there. The one on Needles Highway, that traffic can get backed up.
And that's it. Have a good day.
Thank you. And Mr. Member Longbreak.
Oh, yes, I have a couple of things that I have noticed that went unattended was the guy that said here before, Mr. Longacre. The train, the train that we have down on Front Street. It, it's got graffiti on it and the windows are broken on that and it still hasn't been, been looked at.
The tourism group and, and the damage is recent. And a number of private citizens and groups have paid immensely amount of money to fix, repair the windows. The last quote I got from Mike Smith at the Needles Glass Mirror was twenty-two hundred dollars for just plexiglass. But Jesse Forgoso is, is giving me a rate on some kind of like a metal mesh that can't be vandalized.
Can we get some kind of cover-up on that graffiti? Because on both sides.
And I'm, I'm applying with the, with the COVID thing to do that. I already have the, the paint and, and the painter. So.
Awesome. Another thing I have is.
But, but lighting needs to be there. And I've
Yeah.
asked for lighting before because it's
Right, correct.
Too dark there.
And another thing, the lighting situation, our flag at Santa Fe Park doesn't have a light to it. And American flag should have, always have a light to it if it's left up overnight.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody that voted for me. I'm really honored to sit here in front of you for the next two years and work with the city and the citizens of Needles. And thank you so much. And this ends our meeting.
Jern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question I have for you, a quick.